Good evening and welcome to the City Council meeting of the City of Lenore for Tuesday, July the 15th, 2025. We welcome you here this evening. Thank you for coming out. This is a very special night for us because we have several special recognitions that we'll be doing tonight. In just a few minutes, we'll go to our moment of silence and remain standing for our pledge of allegiance as we go to that time. First of all, let me do some quick thank yous to our city staff for the, this past weekend, we had our annual BlackBerry Festival here in downtown Lenore. I want to thank everybody for a lot of hard work with that. Unfortunately, weather kind of caught us up at a late Saturday, but those kind of things can happen on the outdoor. But up until then, it was a really great event. A lot of vendors and people were here and a lot of good things happened. Thank you all for all your hard work with that, especially Brenda and Ashley and Sarah who kind of ramrodded everything for doing that, all of our staff, police and fire and public works, public utilities, recreation, everyone who spent so much time in helping put all that together and making sure we were protected and safe. And so we do appreciate all the hard work on that. Of course, the event is done by our DLDA, which is the Downtown Lenore Development Alliance, which is a nonprofit agency that handles it. And so everything runs through them. So anyway, we appreciate all the hard work with that. And as we go to our time, the moment of silence, please keep the families of those that will be retiring from us soon, Robert Thomas Jr., who's with us tonight, we'll be talking about in a little bit. Of course, Chief Brent Phelps, who will be retiring this month as well. And of course, our own Shirley Cannon, our city clerk, who will be retiring as well, who had a nice reception here, just a little bit of go for. So keep them and their families in your thoughts and prayers tonight as we go to this special time. Now, please join me, moment of silence.
And our pledge.
Thank you. Please salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We're going to get started with some very special recognitions. Tonight, we're going to first honor and say a very special thank you to Mr. Robert Thomas Jr. Bob, I think, did you go, Bob, is a member of course, Thomas and Means Law Firm, LLP. And he has been working with our police department and helping us for 37 years. And so we are so proud and honored to have you with us and your family with us tonight. To say thank you as you retire, we will miss you. And I know Chief Phelps, I was going to talk a little bit more about that in a few minutes, but we thank you for all that you have meant to working with our police department and helping them with so many things. I'm sure there's stories that could be told for all kinds of things for 37 years. That's right. Don't need to talk about it now, but, but thank you for what you have meant to this, our department, for the City of Lenore. And we wish you all the best in your retirement. I found out tonight, your wife was with WBTV. I'm excited about that. I think we remember when, when she was on many years ago. And, and we appreciate all that, that the service you have meant. I'm going to let Chief tell you more about things in just a few minutes. But right now, I want to present this proclamation to you for what you have done with our city. Recognizing Robert Thomas Jr., whereas in 1986 or 1987, Randy Means and Robert Thomas Jr. were engaged to provide training at the Lenore Police Department under the leadership of Chief Terry Crisp. And they signed the first annual contract of 37 with Chief Jack Warlick in 1988. And that Robert Thomas Jr., a partner in the Thomas and Means Law Firm, LLP, from its inception until its 2020 dissolution, took sole responsibility for providing legal advice, training, and consulting services to the Lenore Police Department shortly after being contracted and, and has continued to do so until his retirement this year. And that he has admirably and with great distinction served the Charlotte Mecklenburg area for 31 years as Senior Associate Attorney and Deputy Compliance Officer for Mecklenburg County, the first full-time sheriff's attorney for the Mecklenburg County Sheriff's Office, and the first full-time police attorney for the City of Charlotte Police Department. And that Robert Thomas Jr. played a major role with the Charlotte Police Department Legal Team in the Graham versus Connor case that established the objective reason of ability ableness standard for evaluating claims of excessive force by law enforcement during arrests or investigatory stops. This landmark 1989 Supreme Court case is still referenced today during in-service training classes covering use of force and search and seizure. And that he has represented more than 30 law enforcement agencies in North Carolina and is the co-founder of the Police Law Journal and of the Police Administrators Journal, as well as former legal counsel to the American Society of Law Enforcement Training. And that society and law enforcement as a whole has gone through many changes over the last 40 years. And Bob has stayed abreast through all the changes to remain a vital addition to our team. He has made significant contributions throughout his career. Now, therefore, be it resolved, that I am Mayor of the City of Lenore and on behalf of the Lenore City Council, do hereby recognize and honor Robert F. Thomas Jr. for his 37 years of service to the Lenore Police Department and commend him for his support and dedication to our city and our law enforcement officers. This is the 15th day of July, 2025. I do have one other thing to give you, and I want to honor you with, highest thing that we can give to anyone is a key to the City of Lenore. And we want to make you an honorary member of the City of Lenore. And thank you for all that you have meant to helping us as we tried to keep people safe in this community. And we thank you for that. So congratulations. Hope that you enjoy your retirement. And it's been an honor and a pleasure working with you, for sure.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. Chief, I'm hoping to say a couple of words. Bob, first off, I think I'm going to get one of those keys at some point. If I find out what it opens, I'll, I'll call you. They give those away, but I've, I've never heard anybody that's actually found what it unlocks. But the mayor referenced it in the, in the resolution. And for the general public and council, it's hard to wrap your head around how influential Bob was for law enforcement and case law with the case of Graham versus Connor. Officers are taught the foundation of that court case today. When I started in 1996, that case was talked about for use of force. And, and Bob was involved in that in an integral part for months in preparing that case. And so I know when I tell people and would tell people in the law enforcement world about Bob, they'd say, how, how did y'all get that guy? And I'd say, I don't know, but I don't want to lose him. And then, as I became a chief, I saw the value even more. In the first couple of years as a chief, I found myself calling Bob on a lot more regular basis. He probably, probably rolled his eyes when he saw Brent Phelps pop up on his phone. But he was very consistent. And Bob would, would always go through a process. Brent, let's look at the law. And let, we would go through the law and we would talk about the particulars of whatever the case was. And what I found was after a few years, Bob had taught me how to be a, a better police chief. Because I realized, okay, I'll start with the law and I'll look through and I'll do my research. And so I got to where I didn't have to call him quite as much. But we, we still called him. But when he told me this past year that he has served in the police attorney area for 50 years, and 37 of that has been with the City of Lenore. You know, I was talking to the manager and the manager said, you know, the mayor probably loved to, to recognize him. And I said, if, if city council would, that'd be great. Because it really has been, it's been a blessing and a huge help for our department and our city, having Bob on staff and available to answer calls and questions and concerns. So Bob, congratulations. And I'll just say publicly, thank you.
Don't worry, I'm not speechless. I'm just trying to figure out how to say a few important things. One day in 1984, I was sitting in my office at the Charlotte Police Department, and I got a call from our Public Information Officer that there was a reporter from WBTV who wanted to do an interview with me about outdated City of Charlotte ordinances. And I was really busy that day. And I came back close to making a really big mistake. The, the woman who came to interview me is sitting right there, my wife Lori. And somehow, I found time to talk to her across my desk for 30, 35, 45 minutes. And we hadn't talked about the subject matter of the interview yet. And I asked her if I could have her phone number, maybe we could continue the conversation in a different setting and at a different time. And I thought when she handed me her business card that, well, I tried, but no such luck. But I did say, that's not the phone number I meant. And now, 41 years later, we're here with our daughter Amanda. And she's not just our daughter, she, she is the wife of a man named Patrick Cameron, whose father, Paul, spent 37 years at WBTV. So it sort of, I guess we're all connected in this family, anyway, to WBTV in, in one way or another. But anyway, what I wanted to say about Amanda, she and her husband, who lived about seven miles from us, decided to buy a new house because they're planning on having a couple of children, one of whom was born a little over a year ago. And they, they bought that new house. It's not complete. So they're living with us. And let me tell you, it's a joyous occasion when I get up to the sounds of Margot, who's 13 months old, talking only, she's not using words any of us understand, except dada. She started with mama a couple of days ago. And now she's saying bye. But the sound of, of the words known, the meanings of which are known only to her, is a real, real great way to wake up. Let me tell you that. So anyway, that took longer than I planned, but every word of it was important. I finished law school, well, I want to tell you about my connections to Caldwell County. My mother's father, my mother is a Whirly. She was born in Asheville. My mother's sister Catherine ended up here. She was Catherine Osborne. Her husband Byron was involved in some sort of executive position for this whole region of the state with what we used to call Southern Bill. And all the name changes and all of that. So, so I had that connection to Lenore. My mother's middle name was Lenore. Her mother's middle name was Lenore. We think that that was because of time spent in Lenore City by her parents in Tennessee. But my mother's father worked for the Ritter Lumber Company. I've been to Mortimer in Edgemont a couple of times, and the Ritter, well, understood, but the Ritter Lumber Company with him as, as some sort of supervisor with them, had a Caldwell County and a Lenore connection. And we speculate that the Lenore name given to my mother was based on time spent very close, if not right in, the town of Lenore, in the vicinity of, well, 115 or, or so years ago, anyway. I'm getting pretty old, but that's, that's old even to me. So anyway, the next thing I wanted to say is I fell into the kind of work I was doing. I finished at Chapel Hill, not quite 100 years ago, in the early 1970s. And I didn't know what I wanted to do, and I stumbled across a regional police legal advisor position. And I absolutely fell in love with doing that kind of work. I ended up getting a call to go to Charlotte, where I really did get a lot of experience doing a lot of different things. And I thought, I'm going to keep doing this. My partner, who was, was an attorney working with me there, decided to form a law firm. We thought what we would be doing is just giving law enforcement agencies in North Carolina legal advice. We did some of that. And one of the first we worked with and contracted with was Lenore, the City of Lenore. And there were four others at the time. We ended up doing law enforcement training all over the United States, all 50 states. And the travel with all of that got too much for me to bear up to after I developed back problems. And so I went to work as the first full-time attorney for the sheriff's office in Mecklenburg County and finished out my time there in the, in the county attorney's office. But the entire time, for all these 50 and a half years, I've been giving legal advice to somewhere between two and 15 law enforcement agencies in North Carolina that were much smaller, that wanted to do it by contract. And I'm so happy today, and will be for however many more years I have, that I spent my professional life doing that. And I discovered early on here in Lenore, Jack Warlick was the chief of police, is one of the finest people I've ever met. And there was such a continuity in the Lenore Police Department, and so, so much in the way of shared values. I used to tell my colleagues, other attorneys, that it's just a joy to be involved with a law enforcement agency that cares so much about doing things right, doing things well, and doing things according to the standards, most of which are found in law, whether it's statutory law or case law, it's found in law. So that, that's why I have spent so many years with Lenore. That's, that's why I'm here. I'm lucky that as chiefs were replaced, new chiefs came along and said, well, we want to continue that relationship. So I'm, for several reasons, which have been referred to by me standing here in front of you tonight, I'm so fortunate. And a lot of that good fortune is right there, but a lot of that good fortune is the law enforcement officers in this room. And I knew pretty quickly, I mean, during Brent's first year with Lenore Police Department, I was the lawyer that was teaching the classes on the ground floor of the Law Enforcement Center just down the street. And I've been doing it for a long time. And I figured out in the process that he's one more of these really fine people that I've gotten to know, working with him in the role that I've played with this agency. So I, I told you I wouldn't be speechless. Thank you for allowing me to say all that. And thank you for what you've done for me here today, in the presence of my wife and my daughter. Thank you so much.
Again, thank you, Bob, for 37 years with us in, in this world. We appreciate it so much. And honored to have you and your family with us tonight and for all this time. Okay, tonight is one of those bittersweet nights, as we talk about, that I've always said, I wish I could cancel these retirements, but that gummit, they won't let me do that. I've tried, but it won't work. So tonight, we, we have a very special recognition for our police chief, Brent Phelps, who is retiring with us after 29 years of, of service with, with us. And that will be effective August 1st.
That's right.
But he's now training his replacement, doing a good job. And he's already
He's ready.
He's ready. It has been. But Chief, it's been an honor, just an honor, not only to work with you all these years. You're, you're just a pleasure to work with. You take my calls and you put up with all that.
Did I have a choice?
No. But you've, you know, you just always try to do everything you could to, to keep things moving in, in the right way. The police force has just been great, grown by leaps and bounds. And we have wonderful people. And, and that's a testament to you and what it's meant for you to be a, our leader and our chief. And we're just so honored that we've been able to spend this time with you. And we know that we'll get to spend some more.
Sure.
But for now, we're gonna let you enjoy some time as away from that and maybe whatever the next thing that comes will be. But our, we're all excited and for you as we move forward. But I'm going to present you first with this resolution. And this is recognition of dedicated service. And I'm going to try to get the word epitome right tonight, for sure. Joshua's reminded me of that several times. Whereas on the third day of June, 1996, Brent Phelps was appointed patrol officer by Chief Jack Warlick, and has admirably and with great distinction served the citizens of Lenore during the tenures of three police chiefs, until taking on that role himself in 2018, on the first day of August. That, due to his dedication and diligence and performing in an exemplary manner, Brent advanced through the ranks, being promoted to detective in the narcotics unit from 1999 to 2002, until his promotion to patrol sergeant. In 2003, he was selected as patrol lieutenant, where he served until 2006, at which time he transferred back to investigations. 2009, he pivoted into the role of professional standards under support services, where he worked until being selected as captain in 2012. That Brent has been an invaluable member of the department, serving as mentor, special response team member, and instructor, teaching firearms and law enforcement classes internally, externally, and college BLT, BLET curriculums. He has contributed greatly in the areas of our K-9 program, investigative procedures, Next Gen 9/11, and field training slash evaluation program. Brent has also played an active, vital role in the community, most recently serving as board member, vice chair, and chair president of the Caldwell County Shelter Home, board member for the Robin's Nest, and a number of committees to include domestic preparedness, incident command, criminal justice advisory, and the North Carolina League of Municipalities Police Chief Advisory. He graduated in the 231st session of the North Carolina FBI National Academy, later serving as regional VP slash president and North Carolina chapter president. That while working for Lenore, Brent earned his Bachelor's of Applied Arts and Science in Criminal Justice from Lees-McRae College, received the Advanced Law Enforcement Certificate from the North Carolina Criminal Justice Education and Training Standards Commission, received and held his SIG Sauer, is it Sauer?
SIG Sauer.
Thank you. Armorer certification, and completed the municipal administration and UNC Pella programs. That he has shown an willingness to go above and beyond what was expected. Under his leadership, the department implemented the first certified critical incident stress management team for the state, collaborated with the Western Piedmont Council of Governments on the Unsheltered Initiative, assigned full-time school resource officers in every public school in the city, and established the first cadet, that's whatever that is, camp for the local students ages 10 through 15. That society and law enforcement as a whole has gone through many changes over the last 30 years. And Brent has stayed abreast through these changing trends, making significant contributions throughout his career and unbelieve serving the citizens of Lenore and Caldwell County. He will be retiring under the North Carolina Local Government Retirement System on August the 1st, 2025. Therefore, be it, be it resolved by the authority of the mayor and the city manager, and on behalf of the city council, that Brent, Chief Brent Phelps has been an exemplary employee and is himself the epitome of the professional law enforcement officer. His contributions to the safety and well-being of the citizens of Lenore and officers of the Lenore Police Department will be held in high esteem and remembrance by his governing body, as well as the persons impacted by his accomplishments. This is the 15th day of July, 2025. That's a lot on that paper. I'm not, I'm not sure how they got all that on there. First off, I just want to say thank you to the mayor, to council, to the manager. I, I have, in teaching in BLET over the years, I, I tell the classes, you know, if my career ends tomorrow, I've had a great career. Now, I didn't want it to end because that meant something bad happened. But I, it's the truth. I've had a very blessed career here at the Lenore Police Department. I showed up on June the 3rd of 1996 to start my first job as a police officer. And what I did not anticipate was finding a home. And that's what the City of Lenore and the Lenore Police Department became for me. We, we talk about at the department, when we hire new officers, that, you know, we, we thank them for coming to the department and applying. But we tell them they're, you know, welcome them to the Lenore PD family. And, and it is a family. And so I won't say too much tonight. I'll save some speeches for, in a few weeks. But I do appreciate this council and manager and city leadership more than you know. 2020, I think back to that year, we had a lot going on in that year, from protest to the pandemic, things that, you know, there was no guidebook on how you operate. And even in those hard days, I always felt supported by this council and leadership. And we're fortunate because we, we live in a good community, with, with good people. And, and so it's been an honor to serve beside the men and women of our agency. So, thank you. I want to present you this as well. Chief, I want to present you this as well, highest thing that we can present to you, that it stands for what you have meant to this community and what you have represented us. By giving you this key to the city, it's telling everyone what you have done to make Lenore such a great place, to live, to work, and play. And you have definitely done that, not only through your police department, but your life and the way that you live your life and the way you have treated everyone. No one, I don't know that anyone could ever say that Brent Phelps is not a friendly person to, because you try every way in the world to do that, even when they're jumping up and down on you.
I do.
That's the way things go. But I would like to present you the key to, I didn't know your first name was August, I like that.
August.
August Brent Phelps. Yeah, like the month. In recognition of 29 years of dedicated and outstanding service to the city of Lenore, Lenore City Council, Joseph L. Gibbons Mayor, July 30, 2025. We'll be giving it to you again later, but anyway, we want to do it tonight officially at this meeting.
It means a lot.
You're very welcome.
It's very nice, very nice.
Thank you. Let's go ahead and do a picture of the Chief.
Okay.
You want me to bring? You need to introduce?
My wife, Conny.
Conny, yeah.
She's my high school sweetheart.
I don't know if you want everybody, everybody.
All of them.
They're, you know, cops don't like being in pictures. Where's the issue with them? I want everybody, everybody.
Yeah, council, go back.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, you did.
All right. Alright. Everybody say chief.
It's unusual.
Nobody said chief.
Yeah, nobody said chief.
Chief.
We were thinking chief.
Say chief.
Chief, you have.
Yeah.
Chief.
See if there's a box if you want it. And as I said, tonight continues to move with another retirement that I wish we could cancel, but unfortunately, I don't have that power. Anyway, tonight, we come to recognize and honor, and we appreciated the reception from Ms. Shirley Cannon. I told her we needed a queen, a crown, something, you know, up here for that, but, you know, for whatever, 27 years. And I've been with it 20, most of that, I guess. We probably talked on the phone about every day. So I told her she's gonna have to call me every morning, just for a while, so we can keep that going. But Shirley Cannon has been just a, I don't even have much to say about her. She has kept us all straight. Whenever we have anywhere to go, anywhere to be, anything to keep up with, we just call and say, Shirley, I've gotta be at a meeting, I've got this, will you take care of it? And it's done. And that's just the way it has been for all these years, that we didn't have to worry about anything. We knew that Shirley would take care of it. She would call you back after she's got it done, got you registered, you're in, I've got this for you, I've got that for you. I mean, and we, you just don't have much that means to, when you're trying to make sure things are going in the right direction. And I guess you'll keep doing that for Paula and the family, when you do. But Shirley, we just want to say thank you for what you have meant. It's been a pleasure, not only working with you, but calling you friend, and just, you know, it's just one of those things that it's gonna be a while to get used to, but come down with me, that we have to, for, to get used to. This is resolution honoring Shirley M. Cannon. Whereas Shirley M. Cannon started working as an administrative assistant for the city of Lenore, North Carolina, on May the 11th, 1998, and she was voted city clerk on August 16, 2004. And whereas during her career, Shirley earned accreditation as a North Carolina Certified Municipal Clerk, and she earned certification as a Certified Municipal Clerk and Master Municipal Clerk from the International Institute of Municipal Claws. And whereas Shirley has served two mayors, Mayor David W. Barlow and Mayor Joseph L. Gibbons, 17 city council members, four city managers, James H. Hip, A. Lewis Price, W. Elaine Bailey, and Scott E. Hildebrand, numerous department heads and staff in performance of her duties. And whereas, as city clerk, plays a critical role in providing open and transparent government by issuing notices of public meetings, creating meeting agendas, and writing minutes of the meetings that are made available for the public for review. And whereas the clerk also maintains a copy of the city's code of ord, code of ordinances, ensures that the city code is updated when council approves or changes ordinances, makes sure legal notices and proceedings are properly advised in the newspaper, and maintains hundreds of other types of municipal documents and records, which I was talking about a minute ago. And whereas during her career, Shirley has provided herself, excuse me, has proven herself to be an accomplished and dedicated city clerk, a devoted assistant to the city of Lenore, mayors, council members, and city managers, a faithful employee to the city of Lenore, and an honorable public servant to our residents. Now therefore be it resolved that I, as mayor, and on behalf of the city of Lenore and city, Lenore City Council, and all of our citizens do hereby congratulate Shirley Cannon on her retirement, and I extend our sincere appreciation and deep gratitude for her 27 years of unselfish and invaluable service and contributions to the city of Lenore on this the 15th day of July 2025. You're very welcome. I'll tell you what, we'll do this, and then I'll let you speak.
How's that?
And also, the highest honor that we can give to you that tells you how much, what we feel about you and what you have meant to the city of Lenore is of course our key to the city. It says, "You have represented this city to the best of your ability and given it everything you've had for 27 years," and we certainly appreciate that. And we wish you nothing but the best in retirement. We want you to enjoy your fine family, which I'll let you introduce in a few minutes, and say thank you for all you've done. This is presented as Shirley M. Cannon in recognition of 27 years of dedicated and outstanding service to the city of Lenore by the Lenore City Council, Joseph L. Gibbons Mayor, July 15, 2025. There you go.
Goodness, I don't know if I can talk, but I will try. First of all, I'll introduce my daughter, Paula Rash, and my grandson Caleb Rash and his girlfriend Madison, that are here with me tonight. And I just want to thank Mayor Gibbons and city council and Mr. Hildebrand. For all, for the recognition and for the support over the years, I really appreciate it. And thank you for the really nice reception, that was a surprise, and thank you for that. And it really has been an honor and a pleasure to serve as city clerk and work with each of you. And I would also like to thank God for blessing me with such a good career and good people to work with. And as Mayor Gibbons said, I had the opportunity to work with the last three city managers, but I might have to say that Mr. Price was my favorite. He was so direct, and he would tell you right off what he thought. He was just wonderful. He really was. But I'd also like to thank TJ, and he's helped me so much over the years with minutes, and anytime I had a question, he would call me back and help me with any issue or whatever may come up. And I appreciate it, and I value your friendship. And also, I'd like to say, it was a great experience to be a member of the Clerks Association for so many years. They're such a great group of people, and I've made a lot of good memories and have made a lot of good friends. And I just want to say that you've always provided such great leadership as council, and I appreciate that. And your camaraderie along with Mr. Hildebrand and the department directors, everybody's worked so well together in moving the city forward, and I appreciate that. And I would like to express my congratulations to Lauren Hartley, who is the new clerk, August 1st, and she's just going to do an outstanding job. And I think she may still be here, but I do appreciate her. She's going to be a great asset to the city, to the council, and to all the citizens. And this word's already been used, but beginning my retirement phase is going to be bittersweet. I'm going to miss everybody, but I wish you all the best. Thank you.
Okay, wants to go to picture?
You can.
Okay, we'll come down to this one. Hold down, Chief.
One, two, three. Say chief.
Chief.
Yay, thank you.
Two of the family.
Just a little bit. Perfect.
Again, congratulations tonight. It was one of, like we say, it was a wonderful night. It's one of those nights that it has to be, even though we hate to see retirements come, we miss our great people, and we'll miss them.
Hundred years.
That's right, over 100 years of service with the people that were here tonight. So that's amazing, and thank you all so much for what you have meant to this city and our citizens, you know, have been, have been those that received the blessings of what y'all have done for all that time. Again, thank you very much. All right, we'll move on then to matter scheduled for public hearings this evening. Tonight, we have a public hearing. This is a rezoning for 143 Countryside Drive Southeast. We'll hear this to consider a rezoning request submitted by the applicant Roger Alex Moss for property located at 143 Countryside Drive Southeast. This is North Carolina PIN number 2758567900, and property 2758567675. This is to be considered to be rezoned from R15 single-family residential to I2 light industrial. Planning Board and the staff of both have recommended denial of the rezoning request based on the following inconsistency statement. The inconsistency statement is the proposed zoning map amendment is not consistent with the adopted comprehensive plan because it would allow an inappropriate intensive land use into a low-density residentially zoned area. The comprehensive plan's future land use map identifies this parcel as an existing medium-density residential and abuts existing low-density residential classifications. The proposed amendment does not protect the residential character of the area. So I will open the public hearing, and I will first recognize our director of planning, Hannah Williams, for her comments.
Thank you very much, mayor and city council. I do have a couple slides to share with you. Right, so we're discussing 143 Countryside Drive Southeast. This is the site of Whitnell Towing. The site is roughly two and a half acres, it's zoned R15. The applicant is the owner of Whitnell Towing, and he is requesting a rezoning to heavy industrial, I2. The site is developed with a commercial building and is charged commercial rates for utilities and has commercial, has had commercial uses in the past. The business was issued a zoning permit in 2020 to operate a towing and recovery business. Whitnell Towing has also begun a salvage junkyard operation since 2021. The business was placed under code enforcement for the junkyard in February of this year. So this is right here, right under the 15 is the site, as well as across the street, right in here. It's an entirely a single-family zoning area, R15, with a little bit of R20, which is also a single-family zone here in the southeast. And this is what has been proposed, I2, for this site. It would include the site across the street as well. It would be a spot zone. So for some history and zoning circumstance on the site, this commercial building was built in 1959, according to the tax card. The tax card lists its use as an industrial warehouse with the highest and best use as commercial. So I'll acknowledge that that is out of sync with the zoning district of R15. Zoning has been R15 as far back as I have reliable records. Historically, planning department does try to work with property owners with this mismatched zoning district, zoning district with the existing development. I believe this site has had a series of warehouse and trucking garage use active for a long while. So when Whitnell Towing comes along with a similar warehouse trucking use proposed, the planning department must have considered it permissible, which is why the business has a zoning permit for towing and recovery from 2020. So however, the zoning permit does not include junk and salvage yard, and a salvage yard is much more intensive and cluttered than most warehouse and trucking operations. And a junkyard is only allowed in I2, it's not allowed in any other commercial district. So our department began code enforcement procedures in February of this year. In mid-March, the business was given 60 days to remove the junked vehicles and cease the salvage operation on the site. Toward the end of that period, the rezoning application was submitted, and we stayed enforcement activities pending this request.
The site is developed with a commercial building and is charged commercial rates for utilities and has had commercial uses in the past. The business was issued a zoning permit in 2020 to operate a towing and recovery business. Whitnell Towing has also begun a salvage junkyard operation since 2021. The business was placed under code enforcement for the junkyard in February of this year. So this is right here, right under the 15 is the site, as well as across the street, right in here. It's an entirely a single-family zoning area, R-15, with a little bit of R-20, which is also a single-family zone here in the southeast. And this is what has been proposed, I-2, for this site. It would include the site across the street as well. It would be a spot zone. So for some history and zoning circumstance on the site, this commercial building was built in 1959, according to the tax card. The tax card lists its use as an industrial warehouse with the highest and best use as commercial. So I'll acknowledge that that is out of sync with the zoning district of R-15. Zoning has been R-15 as far back as I have reliable records. Historically, Planning Department does try to work with property owners with this mismatched zoning district with the existing development. I believe this site has had a series of warehouse and trucking, garage use active for a long while. So when Whitnell Towing comes along with a similar warehouse, trucking use proposed, the Planning Department must have considered it permissible, which is why the business has a zoning permit for towing and recovery from 2020. So however, the zoning permit does not include junk and salvage yard, and a salvage yard is much more intensive and cluttered than most warehouse and trucking operations. And a junkyard is only allowed in I-2. It's not allowed in any other commercial district. So our department began code enforcement procedures in February of this year. In mid-March, the business was given 60 days to remove the junked vehicles and cease the salvage operation on the site. Toward the end of that period, the rezoning application was submitted, and we stayed enforcement activities pending this request. In this site, I include zoning definitions. It may be difficult to kind of draw a line between where towing and recovery and junkyard diverge, so I provided the definitions that we have. Junkyard is defined as the use of any part of a lot for the storage, keeping, abandonment, sale, or resale of junk, salvage, or scrap materials, or for the dismantling, demolition, or abandonment of automobiles and other vehicles, machinery, equipment, manufactured homes, or parts thereof. Towing and recovery is not defined in the Lenore zoning ordinance, but it is defined by state statutes as to remove a vehicle by any means, including towing, and to store the vehicle. So basically, when it comes to towing, the business does not own the vehicle or try to sell it. It's on the site to be reclaimed by an owner, and the vehicle eventually leaves the site. Junkyard, the business owns the vehicle and can sell it, or, you know, it can remain on the site for, you know, quite a while. The comprehensive plan indicates this area is existing medium-density residential. That is what this yellow color indicates, and it does not show commercial use nearby. The Comp Plan Policy Concepts call for protecting the distinctive residential character of Lenore's neighborhoods from encroachment of inappropriate non-residential development. It encourages industrial development in appropriate areas with adequate infrastructure and access to major highways. Policy Concepts call for developing residential design qualities that do not negatively impact air quality, and it also calls for preserving rural areas on the outskirts of Lenore and in its ETJ. And here I have some additional photos of the site. You can see that this is Countryside Drive. You can see junked vehicles on either side. And here are recommendations and statements. Planning Board recommended denial of this request and adopted the inconsistency statement that Mayor Gibbons read at the beginning of this. That concludes my prepared comments, but I'm available for questions as well, the applicant's and the audience, as well as his representation.
Okay. Thank you. Hannah, any questions of our planning director at this point?
I'll be at this point.
Okay, thank you. All right, we are in the public hearing. I'll now recognize if anyone would like to address the council. If this is the time to do so, please give us your name and address.
Wallace Raspous. My office address is 138 North Vane Street, and I represent Alec Moss. As set forth in the agenda, Alex Moss is requesting the city to spot-zone the property that he is leasing and to change it from R-15 to I-2. The factors to be considered are whether this would adversely affect the other property owners on Countryside Drive. We have supplied the council with affidavits from every property owner setting forth that they do not object to rezoning this in order for him to have a junkyard there. Alex has also taken some pretty drastic steps while this has been pending to remove the junk cars from sight, from the road. And I'd like to hand up three sets of photographs. He's also had trees installed in front of the fencing that will, in a short period of time, completely block any view of any cars. Since visits with the city, along with Mr. Moss and myself, he has moved a number of cars back away from Countryside Drive on his property. That's about two and a half acres there, and so the visual portion has changed dramatically. As I said, zoning is intended to protect the neighborhood and neighbors, in this case, the remaining neighbors along Countryside Drive. As I alluded to a moment ago, every one of the neighbors has signed an affidavit saying they don't oppose this. So the very people that zoning is meant to protect have signed affidavits saying, "You don't need to protect us. We don't oppose." I think that's a very powerful statement. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Raspous. Any questions of Mr. Raspous at this time? Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Go ahead, Mr. Beal.
Who is the owner of the property? I think you said lease.
It is. The owner is, that's on the application, and the owner is Robert Reed.
So Mr. Reed owns the property, but he...
He, by the way, he signed the amendment for the application as well.
But he is aware and he signed the...
Not only is he aware, he signed it. Yes. I think the compelling thing, not only is the owner joined in this, but every property owner on Countryside Drive has said, "We have no objection."
That's a big statement. I don't see how you often ever rule that if there's...
Sir, we're...
I didn't say that.
Yeah. We'll get to it. We're in a public hearing. You'll be able to speak if you'd like to in just a minute. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Any questions, Mr. Raspous?
So Mr. Raspous, you said that the property owners on Countryside Drive are in agreement with this. Do you have...
We submitted affidavits.
So we have written documentation on that as well?
Yeah. You should have, the city has the affidavits. We delivered them.
We do not have that package.
I may have an extra copy, but at the previous meeting, we tendered those.
At the Planning Board meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
So they should be part of the record.
May I ask Ms. Williams a question?
Yes, you can. You're going to ask Ms. Williams a question?
Sure.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Williams, thank you. At your previous meeting at the Planning Board, was documentation submitted to you that was in writing about the other property owners on Countryside Drive?
Yes, Mr. Raspous did submit that to the board, from the podium to the board. Yeah.
I just want to make sure we have the documentation.
Yeah, and, yeah, he had quite a few from Countryside Drive, yeah.
Okay. So you have that documentation and have it filed?
Yeah, I didn't submit it with the council packets. I assumed that they, that Mr. Raspous would be providing that again, but I can make that available if needed at a subsequent meeting.
Okay. Thank you. All right.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I have one additional copy if the others have been, it's in the file. They already have it.
They don't have it in their council packets tonight, yet.
I'll be happy to hand these are the affidavits.
Thank you. We'll take a look at that. Thank you. We're in the public hearing. If there's anyone else who would like to address the council concerning this, I know someone had an objection back there. Or a statement, anyway.
My name is Tom Shuford. I own a property on one side of it and above it. I don't recall signing an affidavit saying I kind of, I agree with a denial of request, recommendation. I just don't have any recollection. It's possible something passed my way, and I didn't give it much time, but I don't think I ever signed an affidavit. That's just me, one owner. I have low priority because I don't live there, I just own the property right beside it and above it, 18 acres surrounding it, and I would hope it would become a residential area. But again, I don't live there, so it's not as important to me. And I hope, if there's an affidavit, it's possible, I have no recollection of it.
I didn't see one with your name on it, Mr. Shuford.
Shuford.
Yeah.
Did you see one?
I did not.
Did not.
Okay, that's all I want to say.
Thank you. Mr. Shuford, what's your, where do you live, address? We need to put that...
I live at Camelot Court over Lower Creek.
Okay.
But I just happen to, you know, it's my relatives, the Blair family, half, that's half my family, own that mountain above it, and I have bought the property beside it. But I don't have any great passion to keep it one way or the other, but, you know, we would, if it could become a nice residential, it's got a nice hilltop, you know, it could become a fairly scenic neighborhood, and that would be my long-term hope. But I don't make a living off the property that we're talking about here with that, you know, I don't have, the circumstances aren't passionate for me. I came out of curiosity, but, you know, I don't recall any, I don't recall signing any affidavit.
Okay.
So you need to do us best.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else who would like? Yes, ma'am. Obviously, we know you, Mr. Pennell, but if you'll give us your name and address, we would appreciate that.
Okay. My name is, excuse me, Reva Pennell, and I live in Eastwood Park, which is a long stone's throw from this property, but it is close. And I am disturbed at what is going on there. This salvage place has terribly hurt the tax values and the potential monetary hope that the residents nearby have. And so I feel that it's, number one, it's a health hazard with vehicles and things, and you're going to have rodents and whatever else, insects. So it is harmful to the neighborhood. It's a detriment to our city because it is so harmful to look at. It is so awful to look at. And my family, my father's, my husband's family developed Eastwood Park, which is very close, and my husband and I developed Oak Forest subdivision in the past few years, and we travel that road. And a lot of people are using that road to come across from Star Cross on over to the highway. It's not always safe, but I just feel that maybe the neighborhood, some of the neighbors may not realize how harmful it is when it comes to selling their property, but it will terribly depreciate that property and any nearby property, which would be possibly my own. So I strongly urge you, when you vote on this decision, I hope that you have driven by and seen what we're talking about, and just, deep down in your heart, say, "Would I want that in my neighborhood?" Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, if anyone else that would like to address the council at this time concerning Yes, sir.
Yes, my name is Patrick Rissim. I live at 1873 Greasy Creek, but also have a business inside the city limits. Actually, I'd like to see your nays and your noes on the neighborhood that's against it because I think that if there's more people for allowing him to do it, that he should have the right to do it. I don't see where any of y'all should have the right to tell us what we can and can't do on our property. If we're not hurting nobody, we're not committing a crime, we ain't done nothing wrong. That's all I got to say on it. I think you need to take that into consideration.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
My name's Cindy Price. I live right beside of Alex Moss. His tow yard is right across the street from me. I've been there three years. He is not a bother. The man works from the dawn, the time he gets up from the time he goes to bed. Tow trucks. He does not bother me. The noise does not bother me. There's no smell. I mean, if you want to walk out and smell the air, you can walk out and smell the air. I sit on my porch all day long. I'm disabled. He does not bother me. I do not oppose to him having a business and working for himself. At least he's not out here running guns or selling drugs. I mean, let the man work. Let him own his business. I don't understand what y'all are trying to do to him. No problem here. I'm a neighbor.
Thank you.
I live there.
Thank you very much. Anyone else who would like to address the council concerning this rezoning? All right, seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing and turn it over to the council for any comments, statements, and/or motion and vote when you're ready.
We've got a recommendation from staff that was read and that details their rationale behind, staff and the planning board, that details their rationale behind the decision or their recommendation not to approve. We have a comprehensive plan for a reason, and that's to give ourselves guidance, to give staff guidance, to give property owners and potential property owners guidance on what property can be used for in certain zones. Spot zoning is something this council's never been particularly fond of because we have zones that have to comply. You have to comply with whatever's in that zone, and if it doesn't comply, it doesn't fit the zone. I understand, if I understand the situation correctly, he can keep his towing. It's just the addition of the salvage and the junkyard, so I don't think anybody's saying that his current business of the tow yard has to close. It's the addition of the junk and salvage that just doesn't fit the zone. If it doesn't fit the zone, it does not fit the zone. You can apply for a variance like we're asking for here, or a spot zone, and then it goes before the debate of the Planning Board and the Board of the Council. We've been consistent as a council to stick with the comprehensive plan that we've developed, and based on the advice of the Planning Board and the staff, this just does not fit.
What makes y'all better than us?
We have zoning for a reason.
But statutes aren't laws.
Statues aren't laws?
No, they're not. They're not laws. They're guidelines. I'm very familiar with laws. Y'all use more...
I would ask our counsel, our legal counsel to, excuse me. I'd like our counsel to answer the question in court.
North Carolina statutes provide for zoning. That's not in the North Carolina law.
Excuse me, sir.
That's the Vatican West flag.
You're not speaking right now, please. We're addressing the city attorney.
So the U.S. Supreme Court has said that zoning is constitutional. North Carolina has zoning that allow, that the North Carolina General Assembly has delegated to cities and towns and counties to zone property. It is legal to do so.
Thank you.
Legal, or legal is legal.
Sir, if you want to speak, you're going to have to come back up to the podium.
You've closed the public hearing.
That's right. You're right. I'm sorry.
If you want to reopen the public hearing, you may do so.
I have closed the public hearing. If you would like to speak, I will reopen and give you another chance to speak.
Well, I would like to speak, but I'd like to hear what y'all got to say first, so I know what...
Well, I was speaking when you interrupted.
Yeah, we were speaking and...
You didn't like the answer, but I was speaking. So we do have zoning for a reason, and it's provided for in the different zones.
Okay. Again...
Go ahead. I'd like to listen out, and then if I want to...
I understand. I'm saying, we've closed the public hearing, so we're not taking any more comments from the audience. We are now debating on the council whether to, what, the decision to be made for this. Councilmember Perdue was making a statement concerning the consistency of the statement. Our planning department has given those reasons for that and what it is. It does not close his business. He's tried to modify the business in a different way. It does not fit this area. That's what it is in consistency.
I think everybody on this board appreciates the right of a property owner to do what the law allows them to do on their property. The simple fact that you own your piece of property doesn't mean that there's not laws that say you can't do certain things, and that's, in a sense, what zoning is. And so we appreciate the neighboring property owners that have said they don't have a problem with it, but as a council, we're not... But as a council, we're not focused with one certain neighborhood. We're focused with the entire city and the laws and the zones that we have set forth that have passed. And if somebody does not like the change of zoning, they can petition the council for consideration. This particular zoning request just does not fit the zone in which it currently resides. So I, I don't, I can't support the, the petition and would recommend that we deny the zoning petition.
Okay. Any other comments before we?
Is that a motion, or is?
You make it.
Yes, that was, excuse me, I'm sorry if I wasn't clear.
Okay. Thank you. We have a motion then from Councilmember Perdue that the, the rezoning be denied as presented on that. Is there any other questions or comments from anybody on the council? Seeing no one, I will call for the question. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Thank you. It carries unanimously. Minus one. We have one council member not here tonight. Okay. Thank you for that. We will move on then to item B. This is the 2025 Comprehensive Plan Resolution. And I think we are not, yeah, this, we're gonna defer this. This is due to feedback received. Since the drafts have been made public, staff request that the public hearing be continued to the city council meeting of August the 5th, 2025, in order to thoroughly review drafts and incorporate feedback. So we need to go ahead and open the public hearing and then defer it, or?
Uh, it sounds, my, what does staff want? Don't even open the public hearing and just get, okay.
Okay. Just, just defer it then. Okay. Then I'll need a motion from council that we defer it to the August the 5th meeting.
So moved.
Have a motion, Mayor Protem Stevens. Any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Thank you very much. All right. We'll move on to consent agenda. We have a request of petitions to citizens on the, on the, coming up in a few minutes. All right. We'll move on to consent agenda items. This is consisting of minutes of the city council meeting of Tuesday, June 17th, 2025. Item B are the minutes of the committee, the whole meeting of Tuesday, June 24th, 2025. Item C are the closed session minutes. This is other minutes of the, for closed session minutes of Tuesday, June 24th, 2025, as reviewed by city attorney, city council, and the city manager. Item D is a surplus resolution. This is pursuant to North Carolina General Statutes 20-187 point two, subsection two, or point two. Staff recommends the city council adopt a resolution to declare the following police weapon, a Sig Sauer P320 pistol, serial number 558J478025, and the police badge of Chief Brent Phelps upon retirement at surplus and no longer have any additional use to the City of Lenore as submitted. Item E is the engineering services. This is amendment one. This is construction phase for McGill and Associates for the Finley Area Water System Improvements Project. Recommendation is approval of amendment number one to the engineering services agreement for the construction phase of the Finley project. The construction phase contract amount will increase from $276,000 to $381,000 due to additional project scope and the extended project timeline schedule. Item F is the adoption. This is revised 2025 Water and Sewer Capital Improvement Plan, recommending approval of the Revised Water and Sewer Capital Improvement Plan, CIP. The revised CIP reflects adjustments to the March 25th, 2025 approved plan. The adjustments allowed for the funding of the Finley Area Water System Improvements Project. Item G, this is the amended capital project ordinance. This is also for the Finley Area Water Improvements Project. Recommendation of approval of an amended capital project budget ordinance in the amount of $9,440,000 for the Finley Area Water Improvements Project as submitted. Item H is a resolution. This is for a resolution presented to Chief Brent Phelps in honor and recognition upon his 25 years of dedicated and outstanding service to the Police Department and the City of Lenore and citizens. And item I is a resolution, approval of the resolution presented to City Clerk Shorty Cannon in honor and recognition of 27 years of dedicated and outstanding service to the city council, City of Lenore, and its citizens. All right. That's consent agenda items A through I. Now open it up for any discussion and/or motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve of consent agenda items A through I this time.
Have a motion from Councilmember Perkins that we approve the consent agenda items A through I as presented. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Thank you very much. All right. Next on our agenda are requests and petitions of any citizens. If there's anyone who would like to address the council, this is the time to do so. Please come to the podium and give us your name and address, please. Yes, sir.
I appreciate you guys having me today and allowing me to speak. My name is Chazere Downing. My address would be 505 Wilkesboro Boulevard Northeast, Cat's Corner. My little community had written out of basically a petition about our water. And our water's been having like an oily substance at the top of it, and there's been complaints, but nothing's really fell through yet. So hopefully this little water project helps us all out. Here's a little sample of our water. And it's like got really cloudy floating, you know, stuff floating around in it. So, I mean, decided to bring that up to you guys today, you know. I appreciate it, so.
Thank you. We will.
If you guys would like to check this stuff out, you guys can, so.
They'll come, they'll come to your site.
Got you. Got you. All right. I appreciate it.
We'll come to it. We'll have the water, public utilities.
Say what?
Give your name and phone number to John Hogan. Dr. Church is out of town tonight, but Mr. Hogan can take your name and number and.
Yeah, it's John back there. Yeah.
Thank you. Appreciate you guys.
Thank you. Okay. Yes, sir.
Yes, I'm Patrick Rissim. I already gave y'all my address. So I've reached out to you, Mayor Gibbons. Y'all, every one of you told me to reach out to you, to talk to you, to set up appointment. I reached out to you a couple of weeks back, still failed to hear anything. So it seems like I'm beating a dead bush here. I mean, which, there's only four of you up for election this year, correct? When are you up for election?
Me?
All of you?
Two years, two.
All right. We can get you out sooner. I'm after y'all. I'm coming for you.
Come on.
And it's gonna be legal. It ain't gonna be nothing illegal. I want your seats. And if I don't get them, I want you all replaced by locals that'll do right.
Thank you for your comments, sir. And you are welcome to any time I've told you and you contacted me.
I've called.
You, I told you, you gonna let me speak?
You were gonna get over tomorrow.
You gonna let me speak, sir?
Go ahead.
I told you then, well, if you would reach out to the city hall and give us your name and when you would like to come and meet, we would set it up. And I told you that the day you talked to me.
That is not what you said. I got witnesses right there that heard it. So you're sitting there being a blatant liar.
Excuse me, sir.
Now, I'm gonna call you for what it is. Can you tell the truth for once?
Yes, sir.
It don't sound like it, 'cause you just lied.
No, I didn't lie.
Yeah, you did. I got three people on my list.
Don't, I'm not debating, sir.
And did you arrest the guys for assault last night? Anybody else you would arrest if you see somebody here? Did you? No. Do your job.
You, you come in here, you don't even know what government you're talking to. That was a county. Can you let someone else speak?
So it happened inside the city limits. Do your job.
You got no clue. You've got no clue. Okay.
It's a free country. I want to report you of what happened last night.
We know what happened. You wonder why people don't wanna do this job?
Well, help, you know what you're talking about when you come in here.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
For the record, I would like to say that I have given our guest my card twice and invited him to meet with me twice.
We were all in here when he offered to meet with him several meetings ago, so.
I just wanted that on the record.
Yeah. Thank you.
And I, and I did tell him that if he would recall the city hall, that we would try to set up something. I'm a liar, so anyway.
I think he's done what he wanted to do.
He's, he got his grandstand.
Okay. Let's move on. Thank you. Reports of boards and commissions, we do not have this evening. We'll move on to the recommendation and report of the city manager, Mr. Hildebrand.
Mayor, council, couple items for information this evening. The foothills regional airport authority will not meet in the month of July. The ABC board will meet on Thursday, July 17th, at 2:00 p.m. City council does not have a committee, the whole meeting this month, so you're off the rest of the month. A summer concert event scheduled for Friday, July 25th, from 7:00 to 10:00 p.m. in downtown. It'll be Third Times the Charm performing on the downtown stage. Retirement ceremony will be held for Chief Phelps on Wednesday, July 30th, at J. Huber Hill Civic Center from 3:00 to 5:00 p.m. Invite folks to attend that. The 51st Annual Harambee Festival will be held the week of August 4th through the 10th. It'll have daily events at the MLK Center. Tonight, we have two items for council action. The first is a bid award for the Finley Avenue Area Water Improvement Project. This is something we've spoken about probably for the last at least eight years. It's finally got to the finish line, we think. Staff recommends approval of the resolution for tentative award for the bids for the Finley Avenue Water System Improvements Project contingent upon the North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality approval of the bidding documents. The tentative award we made, contract A, will go to T.P. Howard's Plumbing Company out of Fairview, North Carolina, for the contract price of $6,092,350. And contract B will be to Caldwell Tanks, Inc. out of Louisville, Kentucky, for a contract price of $2,63,700, both of which are the lowest responsive responsible bidders. I would note, we bid this project earlier in the year, received no bids, rebid it, and so these are the recommendations of McGill Associates, our contracted engineer. They also recommend we go back and establish contingency of 5%, which is $407,800, bringing the total construction cost of the project to $8,563,850. Earlier in the meeting, you approved a capital budget orders to go back for this project that includes all the cost of that. It's further recommended that city council authorize the city manager to approve change orders within the contingency amount to facilitate maintaining the construction schedule. I know we have Joel Whitford, I believe, back in the back of the room from McGill Associates standing at the back. And Dr. Church is on the phone. He's on vacation day, but he did call in. He's on the phone if you have questions. Again, we've talked about this project for eight years. Appreciate the assistance from our local representative who helped to get the funding for this project, and we're here at the finish line, I think. So if you have questions, we'll try to answer those. And again, Joel's in the back of the room, and Jeff is on, on the line.
Any questions of Mr. Hildebrand or any of the staff, or Mr. Whitford from McGill and Associates concerning this project?
And I would note, last month, you did approve the rezoning, or not rezoning, but the special use permit for the tank, 150,000 gallon tank there on Finley next to the tank we have presently, so.
All right. You've heard the recommendation from the, from the staff for the bid award for the Finley Area Water Improvement Project. I'm not gonna read the whole thing again, so if there's any questions, anyone, and if not, we'll entertain a motion for the bid award.
I might motionally approve the bid award, ask the minute. Oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, no. I make a motion, Mr. Mayor. Just award immediately.
All right. We have a motion from Councilmember Perkins to approve this bid award for the Finley Avenue Area Water Improvement Project as presented, and it's been a good time coming up.
Got that right.
Any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Thank you very much. Number two.
You stole my spot, right?
We're slowing the draw. The next item's a resolution, which is authorization to move the traffic signal at Mulberry Street and College Avenue. Is, you're aware, we contracted with Madder and Craig Traffic Engineering to go back and do a traffic signal study on the intersection. Based on that study, they recommend, based on the study, that their signal's no longer warranted based on the DOT criteria. And so as such, they go back and recommend a two-way stop there. They recommend also that we do a 90-day transition with flashing lights and appropriate signage to go back and make that happen. I know John Hogan is here as well. He can give you more details, but the study's in your packet and the resolution is attached. And I think, other than that, we're ready to probably proceed with that. I know one, a city attorney may be, be happy about it if it passes.
As long as it's legal and ethical.
Yes, thank you.
But this is only the start.
All right. You heard the recommendation, resolution for, to remove the traffic signal at the corner of Mulberry Street and College Avenue, and they'll be recommending what goes there and all that kind of thing. Any discussion on this? Not, I'll entertain a, a motion one way or the other. You can't vote.
I know. Mr. Mayor, I make a motion, we approve.
A motion from Councilmember Bill that we approve the resolution for the authorization to remove the traffic signal at that area. Any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Thank you. That carries. All right. We'll move on then. Reporting recommendations of the city attorney, Mr. Rohr, or anything else?
No.
Thank you. And again, from the mayor's office, I again say thank you all for the Blackberry Festival this past weekend and for all the hard work that's going in for this summer. I know there's been a lot of things that have gone on weather-wise and streets that have been flooded and all kind of things have been going on. And we appreciate all the hard work that all of our staff are doing for, for things like that. So can get our graduations on that. Anything from any of our council members tonight?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to say one thing.
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
Last couple of days, this chamber's been kinda lively. And, but I'd like to say that for myself, and I, most likely for others in the room, there will be nothing that distracts me from serving the people of Lenore, the businesses, the residents, and the visitors. And we're gonna stay focused on what matters, which is the taxpayers and the people that we serve. And so I hope that going forward, everyone out there, and especially our staff, know that we will honor our duty to serve you and make sure that you can do your jobs in the, the best manner possible and for our, for our whole society. We need to, to return to some decorum and realize that all the decisions that government makes at every level should be for the good of all and to protect all. And that's what all of us have sworn to do and uphold the Constitution as it's written. And so I just, I just thought.
I totally agree with you, Mr. Bill. It's, we're all trying to do the best we can for, for everyone. Sometimes there's people that just obviously aren't happy with whatever, and, you know, we, we do our best for the most people, and that's what it's all about. Unfortunately, that doesn't please everybody all the time. Come to believe, some people, I can't please no matter what we do, but that's just what happens, and we have to, have to do our best with that. And we've been doing it a long time, and we're gonna continue to move forward and, and do the best thing we can for everyone concerned. I don't think as day goes by that all of we don't receive something, that we're constantly calling someone or saying, would you check this, or would you do that? I don't know of any, any time when we're not trying to do what we feel is the best for everyone, so.
But to add to that.
Yes, sir.
Our staff is so knowledgeable, and they research any decisions that are to come before this board, and we, I can't think of any exceptions where we do not accept their recommendations based on their hard research and knowledgeable research. So that's, I mean, I think, I think the staff knows that anything is presented, and we have asked them for their opinion. We generally follow that opinion. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, we set, and we set plans and programs based on the vision we've got, and they're no good if you don't follow them.
That's true.
And our, our employees from top to bottom, every employee of the city, they're the ones that make this work. We can sit up here and say yes or no all day long, but the people who work for the city make this city work. And we appreciate every one of you, no matter what your job is in for this city, because you wouldn't have a job if it wasn't important, no matter what your job is. And I want you to know that we all support your efforts, and we also wanna make sure that you know that if you, that you are always safe doing your duty.
And we have your back.
And we've got your back. Because we know who does the work around here. And it ain't, we don't do that much. Y'all are the ones who do it, so thank you.
Thank you. Thank y'all. Good, very good. All right, we have a closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statutes 143-318.11, subsection A, subsection 3. The council will enter into closed session to discuss attorney-client privilege and North Carolina General Statutes 143-318.11, subsection A, subsection 2, to prevent premature disclosure of an honorary degree, scholarship, prize, or similar award. So I'll open it up for a motion to go into closed session.
Motion to go into closed session.
Councilmember Perdue makes a motion to go into closed session. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. We're in closed session. We don't, do we expect anything? It won't be public. That's right.